And then scroll down.
You like that better?
Yeah.
You don't, you don't get it all at once, but.
Then when I switch to.
I can do it that way. Let's see when we come to other texts, what happens? That, that works, that works, that works, that works. Okay. Just isn't a great way to do it.
So.
I guess we can just verbally say what our questions are. It might be better not to have those.
Where should we be?
You could, you could.
Thanks, everybody.
That might be good idea. That could be right on the show. You know, give it back to me with an analogy of what 100 megawatt. They did not, you know. I mean, how big is 100 megawatts? Can you think of an analogy for 100 megawatts? Could like. I corrected that. In another plan, your document is first through as 400 megawatts. And I think there might be something about another. Go ahead and make correct. It's a very, it's correct here.
I did find out. I think this is the battery unit. And it's. 739 kilowatts. So if you. Multiply that by.
What are you saying?
You multiply 739.
Times 300, what do you get? So multiply, this is, this, I think this is the battery unit that they're using. I can't confirm that for sure, but I think it's called the stack 75, 750E. Based on looking, I tried to get Jim to get back to me about what he thought it was, but. Logic and reading their thing makes me think it's this one. So if it was. Oh, you got DC and AC, but I guess it's DC.
100 megawatts solar powered, power 16,400 US miles.
Oh, well, okay, that's good.
A lot of stuff.
Okay. So this is 739 kilowatts.
Bill, Bill, double field. If, if, do you?
If you go to that photo. Oh, well, yes, they are. They are meeting the chief of our town. But they're trying to, they're trying to.
Oh, that's good. But I didn't just try China. The schematic, which I blew off one of the schematic. It might be a little. Picture of a whole lot, part of it, I zoom in on.
So yeah, I mean, see, all, you know, all this around here, all that. Here, that, down there. You know, first over here, so, you know.
Yeah, this is the back.
Yeah.
That's, that's the hurdle.
Yeah.
And that's the road.
Yeah.
Yeah. To get the road. Yeah, this is all the.
Maybe, maybe we should look at that though. I know the batteries.
That's how it sits on the property. Well, anything.
They have to need a chair, so.
Yeah.
But I'll say, like, you know. You know, I'll talk to.
That'd be good to hear. There we go. Yeah, three footballs. Oh, that's in there.
Okay. I just looked outside.
So, all right, I just started. You want to say something?
We're gonna start the meeting.
Okay, okay.
Everybody ready to start the meeting? Hi.
Hi.
Molly Duty, Chair of the Planning Board. How many people here, I'm curious, have heard about, know about this project or know nothing about it? Sorry. Knows nothing about it. You know nothing about, okay. So, um, gosh, Mary, how many years is this, like, two years ago did they start coming to us now? At least two years ago, a company called Borrego came to us saying that they had. Been in contact with a landowner, landowner at 68 Wendell Depot Road about putting in a battery storage, standalone battery storage project. That they were planning on going through the Department of Public Utilities. They had told us at that time, when we asked them. More about the project, we wanted to know. You know, why were they doing this, this, they wanted to consider it a public utility, why isn't the Department of Public Utilities making these projects themselves? And they had told us that the system that they are applying through is designed for companies like them to do the work for the Department of Public Utilities. And because they would be going through the Department, the DPU, they would be speaking to us, but they didn't really have to. Because they will, in this process, are asking for permission to completely bypass all of our zoning bylaws. Do you remember last year, annual town meeting, we unanimously passed our energy, new energy bylaw, which included. Not allowing any standalone battery storage projects. Most of that bylaw was accepted by the Attorney General's Office in March of this year, but they did reject. That element of it, that we couldn't outright ban these projects. We are now working on a new bylaw to regulate them. Still to be determined if, I mean, we know any bylaw we write now still have no effect on this project if it is accepted through the Department of Public Utilities. So they're in communication with us, and they're, you know, diplomatic legal way that they are, you know. Go out of their way to be, um. You know, open, but then they don't actually really give us any answers so much, so I'm feeling that most of. Any questions you guys have tonight, we won't have answers to because. They're open to giving us answers, but then they say they don't have them, so. The gist of the project, I just want to go to the picture.
Okay.
This is a. Artist rendering of what the project would look like. Those are freight train sized batteries, lithium ion phosph- iron phosphate.
Iron phosphate, 300 of them.
300, so they take up five acres of the project. Um, these right here are 30 foot walls.
Yep.
That go around the entire project, and you can see, so Wendell, 68 Wendell Depot Road is down, like, where Farley meets up, so these are the big power lines that are right there. This is on the west side of Wendell Depot Road, east, east side, sorry, east side of.
We can show this in context here. There you go.
Our bylaws, as they are written right now, without the Attorney General's decision to reject that element of disallowing standalone battery storage projects. Still would not allow a project like this due to the sheer amount of impervious surface. Our reduced regulation table prohibits anything larger than 10% of the project or more than 13,000 square feet. This is around 11 acres of impervious surface. So we as a planning board wanted to get the town more involved. Wanted to get the facts. We feel like it's our job to uphold the bylaws of this town as they are written. I also feel that we had the voice of the town last year, annual town meeting, saying that they supported a bylaw. Just allowing standalone storage projects, I think it's within the character of Wendell to go forward. With. Upholding that message and our zoning bylaws as they are. In a little bit, Bill will speak more to how we can be involved in the petitioning process of the Department of Public Utilities. For this project. This, if this were to go through, it would be several years before we get tilted. If they get the process, the permit, they will then sell it to one company, and then that company will probably sell it to somebody else, and then they'll sell it to somebody else and sell the right owners there. As these projects usually happen. We have no information at all about any sort of pilot program right now. They say they have no context for it. I find that hard to believe, that no one has an answer for what the pilot, you know, that, that's a pain in the leg of taxes. One of our biggest questions would be, would this be. The same tax rate or the pilot that, oh. Something that the state, because it's, you know, through the DPU, they would pay, or what a private corporation pays for a big project like this. I'm not, we're not sure about that.
We do have our legislators working on the issue.
Yes, Joe Commerford and Aaron Saunders have been great resources for us. I, we're not sure it publicly would be, but if through a state tax rate, like, you know, a public utility comes through and they pay less taxes than, like, a corporation came through and. And put a business or something in town. We don't know. Which it would be.
The most we know right now is that, that we're trying to find out more about what the process would really be. But supposedly it's a negotiation between the DPU, the contractor and the town. The town does have some role in it. Probably not much based historically, but that's all we know.
There's only four projects like this in the state, one is in Carver, the other's in Medway, both of those projects are further ahead than ours are in the DPU process. And then there's one that'll be behind us in Westfield. So again, one of the struggles of this for us has been just how absolutely unprecedented it is. The technology is unprecedented. Going above our bylaws for such a large project is unprecedented. So it's just been. It's been a lot of work for us and we are ready to open the conversation up to more people in town. Other boards have been really supportive. Dan from the Open Space Committee is gonna speak tonight, Ward's gonna speak tonight a little bit about the. Borrego rebranded as New Leaf, it's the company now that you'll hear more about. And their, their involvement, because they were the, Concom was the one board that they did have to apply through. Now it might actually be a time word if you do.
Go back to that last, last slide.
Okay, could I, can I say one little thing here first?
Yes.
So what these, just so that you understand, I mean, that what these, all of these slides, every one of these slides except for the one. Are in the documentation that's here, but it's also posted on the, on our website with the link. And what I was actually, what I brought up there just a moment ago. One of the reasons why I was interested in having this meeting was that people could understand what these documents are. They're actually pretty simple to navigate your way through, because you see that they're very logically named. Like, for example. Equipment, what type you just exactly what materials they're going to use. Site plan, that's a piece you just saw with the schematic drawn out, right? The, the, you've got. Equipment each in one and two, actually, one shows it has a whole brochure of power and the people to make the batteries, and I've got a little clip of that. Me here, and I think the one they use is the 750E, I'm not exactly certain, but you can find all of that in the documentation. So one of the goals here is for people to be able to get the documentation and look at, realize it's not as daunting as it appears. Because you've been downloaded by what you're interested in and pick up those individual PDFs. Right, so, so part of thing here is sort of showing you what's in them, and it's so that you can have a better understanding of how to look at it. Because if you look at it by itself, it's just nuts.
And all in this binder, which we have a copy, people can look through, there's also a copy here at the library. All the little tabs in here are attachment numbers, which poorly with the same.
Yeah, and you see that they're, they're like attachment six is, is a, if I, if I clicked on that one. It'll tell me this is the, this is the power and brochure. They, and it, and it gets such all their stuff, and there's a contact number for them, none of us, as far as I know, have actually contacted them yet. But they have projects, they're Canadian, and they have projects in other places all over the country. Or whether these projects they refer to are using the same materials or not, I'm not sure, this is power and stack 230, I don't think that's the same one. But there is some research to be done on contacting other pieces of this project to get more information. Which is kind of a thing we can talk about later, about how we might be able to get that done somehow. Okay, yep, all right, back to. Back to you go, which one did you want, Adam?
That's, that was good, right?
Okay.
Ward's.
Ward, excuse me.
To Chair of the Windmill Conservation Commission, we first got involved in this project, I'll, I'll try to keep it concise, but I'd like you to do a little bit of a history of, of project. The applicant filed abbreviated notice of resource area delineation, I think it was two years ago. For verification of the wetland boundaries, this is a more official form than what's usually used, you can extend this for many years. We ended up reviewing the wetland lines and we added, they missed all kinds of wetlands, this wetland they didn't identify. Anyway, we went through a number of site visits, we. Got all the wetlands, we issued abbreviated notice, abbreviated notice of resource area delineation, and I thought that's probably gonna be in the project, because there's too many wetlands on the site. Right. That was not the case, then they filed notice of intent for the proposed project with two crossings, one wetland process here, another wetland process here. The first iteration of the plan came in and they were working right up to the edge of the wetland. So they were trying to really maximize the site, and I don't think they realized that under our local wetlands bylaw, we have a 50 foot conservation zone, which is a no disturb. Now, the two crossings, obviously wetlands are disturbed, that's a different category, because it's called a limited project, you've got no other access to an upland. It's kind of a thing we have to allow, and when we say we have to allow, we have to allow. So they, they hold everything back. They came up with all this still more to plan, they told, there's a potential rainfall here, we identified that everything 200 feet away from that. So they tried to comply with our bylaw to the extent that they could. We hired a third party reviewer, Emily Stargman, professional wetland scientist, very good, very thorough. We went through a bunch of changes, so what I'm telling you, the project was reviewed quite thoroughly by our commission and by a third party review. What I didn't realize until quite a ways into the project was that they were gonna have this 25 to 30 foot sound barrier, because they're going to have. Air conditioning to keep the batteries cool, so there's gonna be a real sound impact of. 10 to 20 decibels in our conservation zone and potentially in the wetland. And if this were, there was a house there, this wouldn't be allowed, because it would be considered noise pollution. It would be too much, and part of the problem, it's not a problem, but Wendell is quiet, we don't have a lot of ambient noise, so this is gonna raise the noise levels. Around in the surrounding wetlands and surrounding conservation zones significantly.
Ward, excuse me, is it possible to explain what 20 decibels, what that sounds?
I'm not a sound, you know, I, I don't.
Okay.
The, the state law, the state law says 10 decibels is, is unacceptable, increase of 10 decibels. So if you, if you were building this in Boston, it would be different, because it's already noise. But here it's quiet, so if you're going up 10 decibels above ambient noise, that's considered noise pollution for human habitation. This isn't human habitation, this is wildlife, so.
What was the, what was the decibel?
10, 10 to 20 is what they reviewed, they had a wildlife habitat evaluation, a 10 to 20 increase above ambient noise.
About, okay.
So I can't, I think it's 40 to 50 was the decibel level, but it's 10 to 20 increase above ambient noise level. So under the State Wetlands Protection Act, they do protect wildlife habitat, but they have very specific parameters that are protected, and noise and light pollution are not among them. So we voted to approve the project under the state act. But we denied it under the local Wendell Wetlands Protection Bylaw and Regulations for unacceptable impact to wildlife habitat and conservation zone. And we, under our bylaw, protect all the same features of wildlife habitat as does the state act, but the, the bylaw also says, the regulations also say, and other factors. So normally, if you, if you deny something under the state act, it goes to the DPU. If you deny something under the bylaw, it's supposed to go to Superior Court. So we wrote a decision that I thought was gonna hold up at Superior Court, because generally the court will, will back. The, the local wetlands bylaw, as long as you haven't been arbitrary, precious in the past, which we haven't been. So I'm waiting, waiting, waiting to get the notice that they're appealing, and then they didn't appeal. So I thought, well, I guess they're, they're gonna, you know, pull the project, but then I real, then I learned that they're trying to do an end run. The bylaw, so that's just the synopsis of the wetlands issue.
Thanks.
Well, in, in the, in this document, I think I have it here somewhere that may be referenced to it, they describe in the construction method part. All of the mitigate mitigation they're, they plan to do for the wetlands. There is a bridge over one of the wetlands, and that, that might even be in there, it's a little, maybe there's, and there's, there's these things that. Are supposed to suck the water up or something, what are those called?
Water drainage systems?
Something like that, let me see. Think we might get to it. Here. Yeah, those things.
Detention basin, yeah. So, so, yes, they complied with everything under the state act, so they, they did a, they did a screen crossing, they, they built that with the, the DP string crossing standard, so it's one and a half times bank full width. So it's basically a pretty big span of the, and then they're supposed to handle all the runoff from the site, so that the peak runoff is not. It, it's not greater than it was before the project, so they built a bunch of detention basins that slowly let the water out. So all of that's part of the footprint, right, it's bigger than just the batteries, because they've gotta have the detention, they've gotta have all the, the roads.
And that's the plan, that's the plan that they designed, and then this project changes hands, possibly a dozen times, and there's really no sort of check and balance for how these things. Turns out that we just here. Dan, do you want to speak? Dan has been a great resource for us, he brought up some likes of information about the particular location of this. Project being under a suspected officer, over a suspected officer.
Well, it's getting ready, I'm like, so I, you know, people who know something about insurance, and particularly about water. Would appreciate if people pass this on, and then to take a look at this, people in town may have expertise in those things. I certainly can't tell from this, I don't have enough expertise in that particular area to make a judgment about the quality of the plant. But certainly one of our questions, and certainly this was demonstrated by what happened with the Moma, Moma Vala Culver, just that one culvert. Is that you've got all of these things that are gonna be constructed, and. Will it be possible that they do build it to monitor the quality of, following the plan, the quality of the materials, the integrity of the contractors in that cutting corners? All of those things in each one of these points, of which there are many. So it would, you know, there's questions about would the town have the resources to be able to act, have somebody acting as an objective architect rep sort of thing? To, to follow up on all of this at each stage of all these different things they're gonna build. Because the failure of any one of them could be, you know, some kinds of disasters from small to large. So that's one of our big questions. It may be, it may be possible for the town to get the funded for that, it may be, but it depends, there's, there's criteria for that, which is another whole thing to look into, that's, under certain criteria, they have to provide. Objective supervision and under some other criteria, they may not. So it's not. So it's not.
And the criteria that goes through will be different again than the people who, you know, the people who design engineering for the project. Have no responsibility to see how it gets built. So unless this project is through, then it's permanent, they have responsibilities to adopt, so. And your responsibility to now design, design, so it's a labor too. Sometimes I. No, no. I'll take, we're recording the meeting, by the way, I have to say that um for our, if we can't be here, so if anyone speaks, say your name.
Um, Merck McBride, I just wonder whether people, uh, do we know whether these people have done a project like this? And what kind of problems have there been in the locations where they might have been?
That's a good question, uh, again, in our states, um, now, haven't been built yet, um. I think Borrego is a California company.
Yeah, yeah.
And uh, so they have some other projects over around the country. Uh, but as far as we know, Mary, there's kind of been any specific disasters or problems. Um, I mean, there's examples all over the world of battery storage projects, um, staying like um in the past, but. The dismembered technology and batteries, I take the answer as well, but I guess that's the one looking to.
Well, what I heard today is the battery manufacturer, this is a new, this this is a new technology, the. Clasting iron, the lithium clusting iron is new, it's not the not the 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 clusting, I mean, the lithium ion. That has much higher risk, so they claim it's much safer and and it may be. Um, but it's new, and and so some research links, we've done on other projects that are that are implemented. So showing that one of those screens that they supposedly have in private California and other places, they're using those batteries. And that doesn't mean they're. That all these other pieces of wetlands mitigation and five acres of batteries and, you know, fourteen eight, eleven or twelve acres of deforestation. We don't, that's that's a whole different matter in some way, but the batteries themselves, it may be possible to get more research about what other means. And if they're being used in other parts of the country.
What's it happen if they deep?
That's right, well, this, yeah.
That's a concern, that's a concern, hard to answer, certainly, fire, fires.
Um, it's earthquake damage.
Just like well water, uh, it's not a tornado pasture. There are always concerns.
Damage aquifers, you've got no luck. Yeah.
Um.
Anna Georgie, uh, could you say a little more about the ownership of those companies? They're saying a D P U's. I think where is that they?
That it's what?
That it will be a private company.
Yes, they are going through, they want to, they want to basically be allowed, they're they're doing it, they're building to support this too. Um, this company, New Leaf Energy, is asking for this product to go through the same regulation process and as a public utility. So as with the, enter the cell station of the depot, sign that that's something that's allowed by rights. Uh, they're asking to be allowed by rights associated in mass um as a credit person.
Then it is a private.
Dan?
This, by the way, what's up there now is from their notes. In plans, and you can find that in documentation pretty easily. Any remains? Sixty eight.
Uh, no, and I think it'll be a leasing type of situation, which is um part of the uh.
Oh, yeah.
Lots of good time to say that.
Yeah. So, so.
Hi, um, my name is Dan Lady, and I'm the chair of the Wendell Open Space Committee. On May eighteenth, we had a hour and a half discussion about. Presentation about the open space plan update in the town of Wendell. We've had three so far, this is the fourth one, starting in nineteen eighty seven and then coming up to the present. This will be the fourth update, so I'm going to talk briefly about the plan. And also about uh the aquifer. That um the developers will be building over, their proposed project would be sitting over an important aquifer. In the town of Wendell. So. You you've got maps, and these were handouts. At the Open Space Plan Update Public Forum. Um, so the the, there's two maps, the protected open space and the plant and wildlife habitat. And there's arrows designating the parcel and where the project is proposed. And then the other document. Uh, that was handed around is this biomap, and this is um biomap. Is a conservation planning tool. Um, developed by the. Mass Wildlife and the Nature Conservancy, it's been in place for over twenty years, it's been recently updated. And. Where the proposed project is, there's two that is adjacent to two important. Overarching resource areas which are identified. In this brochure. As critical natural landscape. And core habitat. And you'll see that on the map where the arrows are. Especially on the plant and wildlife habitat map, you'll see. The critical natural landscape, and then just to the north is the core habitat around the the wetland core area. So Molly asked me if I would speak. Um, about the aquifer that is located in this area. And. I have to give you a disclaimer, I am not a hydrologist. Um. But while uh working on this open space plan and looking at the prior open space plans. I saw this language. Uh, under aquifer recharge areas. And it said that the town of Wendell, I'll just read this excerpt, the town of Wendell has no existing municipal water supply. And therefore relies solely on private wells for drinking water. Given the continued growth of the town. Wendell residents recognized the need for location of aquifers. In nineteen ninety four, Timothy Limbers, a graduate student at the University of Massa Massachusetts. Conducted a hydrogeological investigation for Wendell to determine potential aquifer locations. As well as to recommend methods of protecting these aquifers. In his study, Limbers found. The Osgood Brook Wetland, a cane aquifer system. And that's the location of the core habitat where the arrow is. That's where the aquifer is. To be the most promising municipal groundwater supply for the town. This aquifer is located in the headwaters of Osgood Brook. Approximately one mile northeast. Of Wendell Center. It was found that the upper limit of developable groundwater for the Osgood Brook Wetland Aquifer was four hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day. Another method of calculating developable groundwater determined the amount to be a hundred and seventy thousand gallons per day. Which is con, which is considered to be extremely conservative. As it does not account for under underflow and storage within the wetland. It was felt that some chemical treatment of the water from this aquifer. Might be required to reduce concentrations of iron and magnesium to acceptable levels. So when reading that, I thought. Well. The developers aren't going to tell us anything about. The contamination of this project, if there's a fire or some other event. Ward Smith won't really allow me to bring it up at a con con meeting. And he's by rights. Uh, authorized to do that because it has nothing to do with the Wetlands Protection Act. But there is this aquifer here. That seems important. I didn't do these calculations, they've been carried forward from prior open space plan. Uh. Documents. But it seems like. It's an important area for potential groundwater, now, we don't own land there, we don't have drip uh wells set up there. For the the town, I just want to make that clear. Um. However. I think I did the math before I left home, and Wendell was incorporated two hundred and forty two years ago. And if we're lucky enough to get through the next two hundred and forty two years. We might need that one. We might need it a lot sooner than that. So. Personally, I think it's an important topic. But we could run into a lot of problems with the state, oh, it's not been designated. You know, certified municipal water supply, so forth and so on. But I just wanted to bring that up, like, that's, I think it's a, you know, a legitimate concern. Um. And as far as the open space. Plan goes. You know, the, if you look at that, if you look at this protected. Open space map. You'll see where the project is. And on. And you'll see the wetlands. Here in the headwaters of Osgood Brook. Everything on the east side has been permanently protected. But there's been not a lot of success on the west side. Of the headwaters along. Wendell Deepa Road. With the exception of Swallow Rise, where there's over. A hundred and some odd acres of conserved land. So. My. Um. It's more than disappointment, I'm 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 being, you know, uh diplomatic. Uh, my disappointment is with this project is these. Developers have come into town. They have disregarded our zoning bylaws, our open space plan, and our wetland bylaws. Um. And every time you bring something up. They basically dismiss it, push it aside, or say there'll be plenty of time to talk it, talk about it later. And basically what hap, what they're doing, they've been successful to this day, is to kick the can down the road. And they pray to God that they get to the D P U and the energy facility sighting boards. Where we might even get locked out of the the discussion because. You need a lawyer or there are other. Reasons why you you can or can't participate in that process. And they'll get their project approved. And totally disregard our zoning bylaws, because this project wouldn't happen under our zoning bylaws, that's why they're going forward. We've. We have zoning bylaws, I think the most impervious surface you can have is maybe. It's not even quite an acre, maybe it's forty thousand square feet.
Thirteen thousand square feet.
Thirteen thousand, that's like what? Little more than a quarter of an acre of impervious surface, they've got several acres of impervious surface on this project. So.
Batteries alone are five point one, something like that.
Right, and that and now they'll describe the project in many different ways, so it's a six acre project. Well, if you look at this. This little eleven pound reading material in here, they'll talk about how that they are going to grub. And clear twelve acres. That is going to be a twelve acre wipeout of critical natural landscape. So. Um. I don't have the solutions. For this issue, you know, my expertise is more in land conservation. Land protection. And. Um. You know. I'll I'll be perfectly candid with you, I. Did a lot of work on the Cape in the mid eighties. And I saw the wipeout happen. Seven hundred single family, more than seven hundred single family wellings. Happening every year in the town of Barnstable. And that was going around on all the town, it's just incredible development pressure. And usually. The time you got to the planning board for whether it was a subdivision, an industrial development or commercial development, it's usually all over but the crime. So that's why. I I personally chose back then to get into land conservation, get ahead of it, and try to protect as much land as possible. It's important in a community. Rather than fighting over the scraps. But sometimes you have to put up a fight. And we're trying our best to do that here. And, you know, Bill Stubblefield understands more about this process than I do. I just want to highlight that we've in in this town. Whether either map you look at. In the this this map here, the plant wildlife habitat, you'll see that this wetland core. Is is one of the most exemplary sites in the state for this specific type of wetland. And I had a slide at the May. I get eleventh, I think it was, right, I think May eleventh, uh, public forum. If you, if you walk in off a plain road. Into the West Stone Woods Wildlife Sanctuary. And then, you know, first hundred yards is easy, second hundred yards, you're working. On your hands and knees, drew up more. When you get to the edge of it, and if it's an October Day. Late September or October Day. You're looking up there and it looks like you're in the Northeast Kingdom or in the North Country of Maine. It is stellar and spectacular, there's nothing around it. And now. The public and private has invested millions in dollars, millions of dollars in the town of Wendell, protecting open space. Sixty two percent of the town is protected, there are still important areas to protect. They totally disregarded our open space planning process because in prior plans. We've identified these focus areas and. Here's here's two thousand. There's the, there's the area, right, right here. Is a focus area for the open space planning process. And again, again, in two thousand and ten. But I'll tell you, these developers are smart, they have five hundred dollar lawyers and they're smart. And they just flick us off like a, you know, a mosquito. And I don't have the answer. For how we're going to get there, but it seems that we have Senator Palmerford. Um, the MIPA, we're going to meet potentially with the the director of MIPA and others, and I think. Um. To conclude, I think that. Aaron, Representative Aaron Saunders said it best. Right, because we're we're a small town. We don't have money, a lot of money to to battle developers, this was in the eastern part of the state. They have a a team of lawyers on this project. We have none at this point. Aaron Saunders said. Because, and this is with the developers, Borrego. Um, newly, Wendell Energy LLC. Number one, this might be the first of multiple projects in this town, we don't know. What they said is, oh, there's this process, they've been kicking the can down the road, D P U is going to take care of it. And uh, energy sighting facility boards. The problem is. You don't have a process if people can't participate in it. Either they don't have the knowledge or the. The the funding, the hire, the expertise under the planning board. And so the planning boards, our town zoning regulations. Projects that we don't, that need a special permit, site plan review, we can require the applicant. To pay for outside expertise so that. We can get good review of these projects, just like Ward went out for a second party review on this project. We could have done that. But no, they've bypassed us, so Aaron Saunders says. You can say there's a process, but if if we can't participate in it, it's a sham. It's a sham is what it is. It's what?
Yeah.
Yeah. This is inaccurate because you don't have.
Yeah, that's a, that's a nicer way. Maybe a little fairer way of saying it, yeah, it's a, yeah, it's both. So, um, anyways, um.
If there was a public water supply in the area of this project, that's.
It's it's unclear, because I brought that up once before, and these projects in Carver, Bill Stubblefield said, the whole thing's an aquifer down there. And those projects seem to be going forward, so. The the answer is, I don't know.
I wonder if Ward, who's turned, has knowledge.
And somehow use that thinking.
No, I, I think. That's what I would hope, that we could use that thinking, but whether you're going to the ConCon. Word. As a narrative, dealing with. The State Wetlands Act, right, or the State Wetlands Act in our local zoning bylaw. You start talking beyond the, the boundaries of that, boom, he doesn't have a gavel, but it's like, that's not pertinent to the conversation, Dan. So, we're gonna get the same thing, I think, in some areas when we talk about MIPA, the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act. Wow, you know, we're really not gonna look at that because it's not a designated, uh, aquifer, and so. Right, so, so we're gonna run into these problems and. Our planning board could take into consideration the open space plan, our rural character. Wildlife impacts, the noise. People come to this town all the time and visit me, like, it's so quiet here, right? We have something special. And then these lands that I'm identifying here within the bounds of Wendell are connected to hundreds of thousands of other acres. We have, we're, we're, we're sitting in the largest. Contiguous protected area of open space in southern New England. So, we're, we're, we're thinking. About something larger than ourselves here. These developers are thinking about getting across the line. They're gonna then, I think, sell the project. They're gonna sell the project, and then. As we had to deal with, I, I didn't have to deal with, but Mary and others. The Arseno project. That's been through several iterations of ownerships, and they're difficult to deal with. So then, that's a whole, that's a, the other thing is sometimes in these industries. Some people jump ship from the industries and then they're consultants to folks like us. But I haven't seen or heard of anyone doing that, whether it's in the solar. The PV side, the, the panel side, or the energy storage side. We do not really know the economics of it. But we think, and what, you know, other people have referred to, it's like finding oil under your land. The money is really. People can't turn it down. Let's just say, most people can't turn it down.
I don't know if the situation specifically with this property, but usually they are, they contact, they contact. These companies look at this property and these small towns and lands, and they say, hey, we want to call to you through the, through this, this.
I would not be surprised if there are actually state subsidies on this company. Much like all the solar field, so, here from state reps. Meanwhile, on the other hand, they're handing out money, uh, like these solar sites. So, uh, it, it's quite possible, this is part of it. State plan for some of the renewable energy. This is all good, so we can plug in our electric cars.
That's exactly what any method is saying, but when this project is built, the energy, if it is being designed with these fossil fuel and. But they're trying to get permission to go through as a free act, because in the future. When they are planning for, for, like this, these batteries can take out overflow.
Well, and it would also go a little ways, I would imagine, for making some of the proposed solar farms here more viable. And so it's also not. Uh, there's no increase in the test form location capacity.
What about? Us all gathered together.
Wetlands, we have a lot of wetlands.
I mean, we, this, I, I just wondered whether this, if, if this kind of folks. Keep getting, uh, turned down by the local communities, maybe they won't come here. You know, and follow us. But, um, I'm just wondering whether the tenants, if we approach them, would they rather sell it? To, you know, right away, yet they, then wait for. However long this process takes, and also be made by the whole community.
Secret makeup words of a hundred thousand dollars.
There's a saying, well, it's the highest of best, so sometimes you can appeal to somebody's sensibilities. And there's more value than maybe just the money, although I might agree with you, but.
Well, I, I mean, he, he's kind of quiet.
Other plans, yes. Yeah, Kenny's had somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty acres in that area. But I don't know the configure of it. Right now, it's, it's done any other subdivision. I just wanna follow up with Alastair. That when they first came to town, they did have a, a Zoom meeting, you know, and sometime in the height of the pandemic. And, yeah. So what they said was Massachusetts public policy is in their favor. That's what they said right off the bat, right? So, you know, unfortunately, when laws are made. Communities are in the, the room where the, the deals get, uh, and the industry knew to be there, and. And, and we have the policies that we've got. The other thing that they said over and over again. Throughout this process is this is gonna be out of sight, out of mind. Right, because you can't see it, right? And if people, you know, if I got a. Drone camera and showed you this watershed, people would be like, how could they be doing this? They're gonna try to do it, and it's an exquisite watershed. That's. But they kept saying, out of sight, out of mind, because it probably works in some places, right? In more urban suburban areas, as long as people don't see it, they got already got a lot of noise going on. It's like, okay, we're, we're good with that. And they move on, but we have something very different.
This is absolutely in the historic. March of corporate exploitation and resource exploitation of Western Mass. That really started with the father. They went, uh, when I moved here in seventy-one, they were fighting, uh, Boston, building a dump on the Monica Plains, then the nuclear plant. Then, you know, the, what, the, uh, next lease, next lease, uh, water project. You know, then the pipe route too, you guys, you know, and my experience. Watching this and being part of this is. Don't go the lawyer route, go united community with all the arguments. And just sit and say no, and really get it before they get any. You know, and Shitford is in the same situation, and they're trying to raise a hundred thousand dollars for lawyers. And yet people don't know what's going on, and it's the same thing. It's a solar thing on a wet, you know. On a hillside, feeding it to a reservoir. You know, I think if you look at this in another way, because they're setting us up. The setup is even with the new administration, you know, which is just getting their feet, you know, they're just figuring out what they gotta do. But they're sympathetic, I think. Um, you know, it's, if we try to fight them on their, we're, forget it, you know, we can't. But if we fight it on the real, you know, to people, media, and really, and talk about what's going on and not talk about their. You know, I, I read through some of it, it's just like the same, you know, uh, regulation garbage.
Imagine I have these phone calls with them, or they'll make the point to call me, and call me back, and we need voicemails, and I'll get back in touch, and we will talk for ten minutes. And they will say nothing, like, they just didn't say, you know, it's just the. Um, I think now would be a great time for Bill Stubblefield to speak. Um, he's been an amazing asset to us. He is well versed in the process. Um, he's been involved in a project in Carver Mass, um, also you find, save the pine areas. Which has been a great group, we're trying to, um, to try to stop a project like this in, in their area. Bill's just got a wealth of knowledge and.
Just as a means of explanation, I scroll, I'm not scrolling randomly. Um, this is, this is showing you, you see where the project would be in the center of that, that there's wetlands all around it. So this is a blow up of their own plan. Right, so their project would be right here. Right, you can see that. So you, you see the different schematic come up. So I would, like I say, I would encourage you all to download these documents. And as I've said it before, also that they're logically named, pick the ones that seem like they would be, you're most interested in. And scroll through them and, and really study them, and, and if you have certain areas of concern or things that could jump out at you, that can be very helpful to everyone. The is on the Wendell website, it's on the front page right now, and there's a link to it, like I, I showed before. Makes, that maybe didn't make sense. Um, this is what you'll see there. You see all of these documents come up when you hit the link. They're all there. They're now all in one zip file. If anybody really wants the zip file, you let me know, I can probably just send you that. But, but these are what they are listed in on the website. You'll see there by attachments and, and their name. So you find it, thanks, that's, when I clarify that.
Uh, okay, uh, thank you all for coming. I think this is a really important issue for the town. And I'm pleased to be able to share a little bit that I've uncovered, uh, in this sector. There are three government agencies at the state level. That are involved, or should be involved. Or are already involved in this project. And they're all parts of the ener, executive office of energy and environmental affairs. And it's worth pointing out upfront. That the state is committed through the Global Warming Solutions Act. And several recent amendments to that act that commits us to a net zero. Uh, carbon emissions or greenhouse gas emissions by twenty fifty. And the core way that the state is proposing to get there. Is mass electrification of everything we can electrify. And so, and so phasing supposedly, we've phased down. All fossil energy and switch to cleaner energy, uh, so-called renewable energy. And critical to that is energy storage. So the reason for that is that all the renewable energy, whether it's wind or solar. Not so much geothermal, but wind and solar are both really intermittent supplies. So that means you have to have some way to even it out to meet the baseload all the time. And when people come home from work and turn on the, all their appliances and air conditioning and. Watch their sixty-five inch TV, uh, there's a big surge in electric demand. And, and of course, historically, we've always wanted to meet every demand. We've never said we need to limit. The amount of electricity we produce. More is always better. Growth is always better. And of course, that fundamental ideology of endless growth on a finite planet. Is really the core issue on how we get into these fixes. Again and again. Okay, the three agencies. Uh, that are, are critical to us are the Department of Public Utilities. The Energy Facility Siding Board and MIPA. The Department of, you, you, uh. Public Utilities and the Energy Facility Siding Board work very closely together. Uh, and they have. In its wisdom, the state has. Recognized that it's tricky getting big projects into town. So they set up this process to facilitate, you could say shoehorn. Projects into towns, whether they're welcome or not. And, and the fundamental reason for that is these are so important. To the future of the state and the welfare of its inhabitants. That, uh, it should override local concern, which are always considered to be merely nimbby concerns. However justified they are. And of course, it's a headache for the state. So if you set up a little group and empower them to make the decision, that deflects a lot of. That are rotten tomatoes that come here, but so virtually every state does this one way or another. Okay, the Energy Facility Siding Board is that exactly that. It's a siding board. It's for finding places to put the energy projects. Um, that date back, that dates back a few decades, so it didn't anticipate. Uh, industrial solar development or mass battery thing. Those weren't even a glimmer in anyone's eye at the time. But it, what, in those days, it was all fossil energy, and if you read the enabling energy. I mean, the enabling legislation for the siding board, it talks about energy storage as big tanks for fuel. And that kind of thing, not better. And we'll come back to that. But the Energy Facility Siding Board has special power. That it's accreted over the years, and one of those is the ability to set aside. And one of those is the ability to set aside conservation permission ruling. Uh, because they have been branded the ability to write something called a certificate of environmental compliance and the public interest. So they, in their wisdom, decide that this project is so important that local ordinances or bylaws just don't matter. And it's a facility siding board that has power over the conservation side of that. The DPU has power over, yeah, can set aside any zoning regulations that might interfere with one of these projects deemed to be so critical for the overall public interest. And so the way a company like New Leaf Energy would take advantage of these opportunities, since you have to, there's a whole process. You have to file a petition and they filed a petition with Energy Facility Siding Board. And they filed a petition with the Department of Public Utility. The siding, the whole process have been uh, opposed from the beginning by a group I've worked with us called Save the Pine Barrens in southeastern Massachusetts, and they opposed the first big battery storage project called Cranberry Point in Carver, Massachusetts. And amazingly, uh, one of their arguments was that the law doesn't give them the power to regulate or make any decisions involving battery storage. Because there's no explicit mention in the law, as I said, about that. And in fact, their um, mandate has to do with energy generating facility. But a battery storage system doesn't generate any energy. It's entirely a storage system. Uh, so they take electric electrons off the grid, pack it away in their battery. And then when the, when the price is right, or whatever agreement they've made with the utility, they flip the switch and uh, discharge your batteries onto the grid. And it's only good for a few hours. It's not a long term thing. It would just meet, be able to meet the short term uh, demand fluctuation. Like this whole thing would be discharged in four hours. Something. Okay, now the Department of Public Utilities has its own special powers also. And as I said, it's the override zoning regulations. So one of the ideas people have said is, well, we should make some of these bylaws as general bylaws, not zoning bylaw. I think that's probably too clever, right half. And in any event, uh, that sort of brings us to where we are today. So all the Carver case, the Medway case are already before the board. And they're also, uh, and Wendell is before the board. Um, now, um, so, um, as I was saying, Save the Pine Baron, Barrens argued that these aren't generating facility. And lo and behold, the siding board agreed with that and said, yes, these are aren't generating facilities and the legislator better change the law or we have no, we can't say anything here. And so we're done. Uh, which is great, except the DPU is still there. And it no doubt has all wheels turning in the State House and the governor's office on how to deal with that. One up to date thing is just in the last week or two, uh, the Conservation Law Foundation has filed a whole set of half a dozen positions for rulemaking by state agencies to further the global warming solutions act. And one of them deals with Energy Facility Siding Board specifically. And if if this were passed as a rule in a rulemaking process, that would give the siding board full ability to set aside any local ordinance or bylaw as part of the push to accelerate the rollout of all clean energy so-called. It's worth noting, by the way, that renewable energy is a buzzword and it's not really renewable. The sun's still there and the winds still blow. But you build a machine to do that and that machine to capture that energy and that machine has a very short lifespan for this project. It's like twenty years or or something. So that raises another important issue when you're talking to the people is about getting out of it at the end. Decommissioning. If it goes forward, this is really important. Because we don't even have any idea who's gonna own it at that point. And if we don't have a big SPRO account or some bond that says that money will be paid and they'll be restored as much as humanly possible to the status quo ante. That's a gonna be an important uh, negotiation if it does go. Okay, the third agency that's involved is it has been mentioned already, and that's MIPA. The Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act. And um, their mission is to examine uh, the potentially environmental impacts of projects. And there are several reasons to think that they've been asleep at the wheel as following this project. Um, for one thing, their own guidelines, say you read their rules and regulations, that there has to be automatic MIPA review on a project of this size. If a language is generating facility again, so if that needs to be clarified, but that should have triggered an automatic MIPA review. Another one that could uh, trigger enough, should have triggered an automatic MIPA review is the amount of impervious surface. Because their own guidelines say five acres. And even if it isn't five acres on the uh, batteries by themselves are barely under it to escape scrutiny. There's also the connector facility. And these are not neither exists without the other. So there but no off segmentation isn't an option. It has to be considered together. So that's another important point to make to MIPA. Anyway, none of those triggers happened. MIPA has not been involved. And we've gone to, as mentioned already, Joe Comerford and Aaron Saunders. And they sent a letter stating our concerns. Uh, there was another opportunity. I think there was a letter to to the governor or something and made these points. Uh, I was able to be at a personal, uh, very small gathering with Melissa Hopper, uh, the climate chief. And I made this argument that we're really upset about this and MIPA should have been involved. And she said she would take that back. So anyway, it looks like all of that had some little effect, at least is now they're willing to meet with him. Uh, so that's one opportunity. If that fails, there's a third opportunity or another opportunity with MIPA, which is there's a fail-safe provision, so-called. So if MIPA fails to do its duty, ten citizens and go to them and file a petition and say you blew it here. And there has to be some, there's some adjudicary uh, process on how to how to resolve that. It doesn't mean you'll automatically get attention, but that's another way you could, um, you know, potentially stretch things out. Um, now, how can we participate in these things? DPU Energy Facility Siding Board usually combine their actions into a single docket. And there's two ways we could uh, participate in that. One is just bare bone minimal participation. It's called, I think the official name is limited participation. Anyway, you file a petition with DPU and say you're in interested. And then you'll get notified of every new document or filing in the case. But you can't ask questions or give testimony or any of that. But you can see the documents and know that things have happened. To really be a participant and have the right of appeal, you have to be a full-fledged intervenor. And that's very difficult for a town like us, because you need real legal firepower that's familiar with CPU and E F F S B crop procedures and all of that. So that's a very small set of very expensive legal opinion. Save the Pine Barrens became a full-fledged intervenor in the Carver case. So that's a useful one. And all this is public information on the siding boards and DPU's websites. So you can see every document that's been filed and so on, and every decision that's been made. And the because of private funding, they were able to get legal help for the team fighting that. And they were able to hire, uh, expert witnesses that could testify to just how safe the batteries are. Just how reasonable are the precautions they're taking about releasing dangerous substances and stuff. And those testimonies are available in the, as part of the Harvard, the Cranberry Point docket. So those could be useful to pull out when you're talking to people and so on. So I I think that pretty much covers what I can add to the story, so. Pardon me? I think Dan talked to Audubon about this being very close to their sanction. Shouldn't they get concerned, be concerned to get involved? And I don't think that got a positive response, but.
Several conversations, uh, the staff there, um, here, you know, our concerns. And they got back, um, and this, a statement which shows that they they're being cautious. We're not gonna get involved in fighting something that's allowed by law. However, you know, I remind them that there is gonna be potentially this MIPA and then the Energy Facility Siding Board and then also MIPA. They'll probably jump in, MIPA. Um, they'll probably something to that, sure. I don't know that, but it seems maybe closer to where they want to go. You know, they're, I think they're since it's my perspective, but it seems a little conflicted, um, to dive into this project. And then they also have policy that is promoting like this renewable energy. So they have a staff person there. And I've heard even on other, that staff person say other things on other forums around these these matters. If we just push this out of our state, it's all gonna wind up in somebody else's state, completely to take responsibility, so forth and so on. And so I just wanna give another shot in there. It's like, you're telling me that along our lines like you, but are not twelve acres of a degraded site somewhere else? That's what I'm hoping that we can have some luck in MIPA. What was their analysis?
Absolutely.
They they responded and just that we've looked at a lot of sites and this is the best one.
Yes, and MIPA requires that there be alternatives. You have to present a set of alternatives and show that this is the best of the available alternatives. So the MIPA thing would be very valuable.
Yeah, uh, my name's Paul Costello. Uh, I'm wondering, uh, if there's a set of criteria that has been published that, uh, the ideal kind of site for one of these battery storage facilities. If there is some sort of ideal criteria, uh, perhaps, uh, you know, we could redirect the New Leaf Energy folks to some other site that would be more appropriate.
Yeah.
And it would be a win-win situation.
Just a moment, I'll see if I can address that. The question of optimal placement of of these things that have the least negative effects ecologically you know, whatever criteria might matter, haven't been explicitly done. We kind of jumped into this with both feet and the the basic stuff hasn't happened. D O E R uh, is working on a solar siding study statewide. And that will make some recommendations along these lines.
Yeah.
How good a study that will be, it remains to be seen. I just learned that Mass Audubon, um, and I some partners, I think, are doing an independent study of the siding issue. And working with, uh, some of the same people at Harvard Ford that have been doing the land sector GIS studies for the state in connection with the uh, climate initiatives. So, um, I think that's probably a better study, but right now, there's no guidelines, except that there are quite a lot of specifications if you're gonna get a subsidy through the SMART program. And now they can't give a subsidy if you enter core habitat. And there's a few restrictions like that. But basically, no, there is no general guidelines for that. And that, and of course, the market knows best.
Right. I mean, that's a huge part of it, too, is that it makes sense for them monitoring with this project. I always wondered, so the little master of the power lines, why do they just line up so people's hair, right? They went out to destiny, um, they have to be spread out like that.
This might just be a worthless piece of swamp. And that's why they're they're thinking that no one would object to having this put on a worthless piece of swamp.
This company, for people to know, is a forty-four billion dollar company.
What makes this especially appealing to them is access to the power line with three-phase power already in place, a nearby substation. So that's their mission. They're looking for places like that where they can move in immediately. And it's battery storage, because that is off-the-shelf technology.
One of the documents talks extensively about how they're gonna move the
One of the documents talks extensively about how they're gonna move the stuff into town. This is a lot of head stuff. There, you'll see, and, and I don't have that here, but there's an extensive what roads are gonna take. Um, how big the trucks are gonna be. So, so that's a thing to look at. Uh, it's, it's pretty extensive. A lot of stuff. Yes.
The other bridges and things like that can't take the weight.
The weight, that's right, I noticed something about the weight.
I guess my question would be, I'm not far sure why they would site these next to these huge solar fields that exist or any.
They're independent of the solar projects. This is standalone battery storage project, so right now this isn't just taking green energy, it's taking fossil fuel.
So even though solar and wind energy.
Right.
That's how they're selling it as in reality.
Correct.
Why wouldn't it be an orange with a huge array all over the bow? You'd think they'd replace them next to the.
Well, so now, um, state regulations, all the solar projects going forward have to have not battery stores on site to support. The mega loss of, where the loss of.
So maybe that is a mission called to why. Why can't we suppose? Is there any issue with light pollution, would I do that? Surely isn't it other than. I don't believe so.
No.
Yeah, I can imagine.
Briefly, I should tell them, you're shaving for uh maybe short twenty years down the line. It's going to get broken down and. Who's the, who are they going to negotiate that?
That has to be done with the developer at the beginning and an arrangement has to be made for decommissioning.
It's unweird to us at this time, we did the DPU process, how involved we actually get to be. So if this was going through our bylaws, you know, so you have to lay down this, we're dealing with us and then he doesn't have to say it. You'd say, is that best protocol with, you know, the cost, with relation of what that project will take. That would be, this is the engineer, the designer, whoever buys this product will be the developer, so we.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Another example of what's in the documents is this is the safety plan attachment. Um, I certainly have not looked at all these things, but uh that's an open opportunity for people to study this stuff. And find what laws and drawings, I think, or strengths.
Um, I speak in contact with the police department, um, I know that, not to put you on the spot, but if I say anything that you're making what had to. Um, well, you know, um, because you're wondering, there's a fire, you know, how in the heck could our volunteer? Um, your site writers possibly, you know, put this out, um. Well, we have a wondering couple, if there's a fire, where do they get the water to put up fire? Well, it turns out there'd be no water involved. So where does that come from?
Yeah, they supposedly have built-in fire suppression because inside of it.
Right, it'd be the same stuff they use uh on the air bases.
I, I have a fair amount of confidence in these people for five, year, eight, year, ten years.
Very good point. So.
Though it says the plants are pretty easy to look at, well, for me, they're not that, that easy to look at. You've seen these stormwater plans, so I think more that they submitted a stormwater management plan to the compound. Yes, from my interpretation, all the water that's gonna fall on that, it's gonna be a surface that's going into the ground. And so, zero is, they use chemicals and that reaches. It's captured by this kind of stormwater basin that's going into the ground.
Yep.
Yeah, I show these not to, not to say that I'm defending it in any way. I'm just saying, this is what there's in there. It's easy to isolate issues. I don't know how you see this, so understand actually what's in it. That's a different question. But this is, this is ideal. This is their stormwater piece, right?
I mean, I think I have an answer to every question, but personally, it doesn't seem that's competent. It doesn't dare to be competent if someone is actually going to follow through on these.
Exactly. Problem.
Yeah.
Steve Gross, um, I guess my sense is that it's really the scale of this thing that is so daunting. The thing that they're trying to do is in a smaller installation, but not necessarily that this water is still maybe. It's many of the same questions, but it's still massive. We don't know how dangerous this is. We don't know if they can or cannot actually take care of things when they go wrong. But you can well imagine anything outside of the uh problem.
Makes us start thinking this. So, so when this thing's all set up, is there? Is it commissioned or licensed for extra years and then has to be licensing at this point?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure about that. With projects like this, this technology has only so much lifespan. And we just, I would say thirty years, but maybe awesome.
Yeah, we know that was true. We license it and get it.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
That is scary.
I mean, that's what the reason to me is, if they put battery stores in like ten years ago, who are we gonna get from that ten years from now? Are they gonna still prioritize this project? Are they going to, um, you know, gonna start a little bit more smaller ones and more efficient? What's gonna happen to this project?
Oh, they could keep adding new batteries.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Yeah.
I can find it unlikely that they would, after twenty years, dismantle this whole thing and try to put it back in the normal. It doesn't make sense if you have all the switchgear and roads and everything, the horse has to change out the batteries, like, keep using it.
I think it would all be, or get to this. Which is probably make that, that's.
Well, it's hard to imagine that twenty years suddenly just. So I, I don't really buy this idea, but somehow it's been cool.
Right.
So they actually said what batteries? I'm just wondering if. Yeah, so. Yeah, so the older versions of batteries, like we all have our hybrids and our electric cars. Like, we can't put those out. So I'm curious what they're doing different with this.
With this new technology?
Low water on it to stop the thermal runaway. And what we're calling, what we have in the electric vehicle fire, and one going to be so rare. But it's a huge deal when they fail, um, about one car that tells us there's thirty to forty thousand that.
Someone actually, there was something about this was to contact the company that makes batteries, which is following right here, this company. Um, and have a discussion with them about that, uh, aside from the, the contractor and all that, that would be great. And if someone in the fire department would do that, uh, we might learn a lot from that. I mean, they're easy to, there's contact information right here in the brochures. Um, and that is in the documents and I could also pull that out for you if you needed it, but I, I don't think they're hard to get to. Um, they have a product.
Lithium iron phosphate.
I know, I have heard this from one and the others, so. Um, people in the solar field, but these are much more stable, iron phosphate, much more stable and less prone to the fires.
Yes.
Sure, and even on an electric vehicle, it's definitely.
But then that's seventy-two, front-end sized, you know, batteries.
Um, one thing I wanted to add, um, to what Bill said, this is something interesting. Um, when did EFSP Energy Facility Society Board made their decision, um? One of the maintenance, um, there's an article about it, at the end, uh, it said the stakes are high. Both projects, meaning on the harbor and where, uh, I'm sorry. Both projects apparently confidently they would want approval successfully bid into the regions forward to fast market. Which indicates electric space buyers to be in the level three years in the future. The cargo project gained into the market in two thousand twenty-one, the required type of tower bill in two thousand twenty-four will face a substantial financial loss. The company held at the facility says the major approval of the strength of project management in twenty twenty-three needs a deadline. The next project faces a similar situation and must be ready to survive everything like in first twenty twenty-four. So you guys just speaks to how confident these companies are that they will get. And they thought a lot of things on the table. There was a prospect that makes a decision, uh, when I wrote to, um, our contact. They weren't excited about the EFSP's decision and I was still, I still had faith in the DPU.
I just thought that was, these companies are so positive that this is almost gonna have to happen.
But then plus, uh, what, address that here, very quickly, uh. Robert Kennedy is running for Democratic Congress. And uh, it's virtually no outrage at all, is pretty much universally, you know, Xander Thatcher, conspiracy nut. Uh, but yes, and his whole career working for, I guess, government corporate collusion, which is what's happening where. So I think it's worth at least listening to what he has to say.
Environmental law, right?
Yes, yes, and I've been systematically shut out, don't read any art, anything like that.
Uh, also, I think we can email from Eric Weinstein, who are our contact. Mr. He, thank you for reaching out about this matter, um. This is good news for the project and will allow us to move forward more quickly. The project will continue to sustain the DPU citing revision review process as the project has continued to need to seek some new adjustments. The DPU citing revision review process will look very similar to that of the EFSP. And we expect the DPU starts their DPU starting processing. Citizens may need to look for ways to enhance our project design to address towns' concerns and are committed to working with towns throughout the process. In addition to the other three review processes, I want also to do. It's just something like that, you know, like he, you know, we continue to work on work right now and all they do is just kind of pay in touch, but there's kind of now. You know, I, I believe that we invited, I, I was actually trying to do invited to the. Uh, data said that they will have meetings with WENL, um. You know, they're not required to. Yeah, there's just all this kind of open language about the part of the. So we're gonna go, yes.
But they said how it's been caused and like what's the.
We don't really know the number. There's one number that was speculated, but someone knows a little bit about what batteries cost. My memory hasn't put out that number and you can kind of figure it out if you're yourself. You, you might even have a battery that. You bought in the car or that everything, or, or you have battery in the yard that you store in the generator.
Yeah, uh, a hundred amp hour, uh, forty-eight volts lithium, iron, iron phosphate batteries. Uh, minimum is fifteen hundred dollars.
That's a hundred.
A hundred amp hours.
Amp hours.
Forty volts. Um, yeah, it's minimum fifteen hundred.
Yeah, so kind of get the scale of that, kind of multiply that by, uh, a lot. At least a thousand. More like ten thousand, I think. It's just somewhere in a neighborhood of where.
We could find out that answer, I mean, at least I could ask him.
Every time he puts money aside to re- reevaluate the market. So they maximize the tax income on the project that's included in the project. Something that's a talent which.
And that's a public utility.
Yeah. And maybe our support for, in fact, that is what part of the process. Because if they do it and you don't have some money to hire an expert to evaluate that project. If it's gonna happen.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah, that was scary to us is just, you know, a person evolves and, you know. They can't give an agent about the title that they don't help, they don't help facility that. So, you know, that we won't be, you know, walked over probably two miles away.
I find that hard to consider investors, they're more exactly.
Absolutely.
The, but I also bet that. Energy companies like Firstlight, which is more than nothing. They're like based in bed. It is part of that bigger picture, you know. And they wouldn't be just, it's not benefiting us, Wendell, it's an energy, it's benefiting. Like northeast energy.
Well, we don't know what the finance is about, but they would be. I mean, they're gonna be like, you know. So.
What is, is that the value of this or the cost of this maybe as much as the entire valuation of the town?
If they're renting a land for a hundred grand a year.
I mean, I threw that money out there, I don't know, you know.
Hundred and twenty, okay, being a hundred and ten.
Um, if you remind, Laurel's been writing. Um, on our Zoom link here, Laurel and Winita have been writing, so I just wanted, um, to read a few of the things they've been saying, because they couldn't be here. Laurel Facey said, "The destruction of, of over eleven acres of forest for a battery storage installation is deplorable. And the fact that those acres lie over an aquifer on which future one delights may depend is unconscionable, unconscionable." "I heard testimony from at least two dozen people representing thousands of citizens who spoke for smart solar sighting, which does not destroy forests and wetlands." "Our rep, Aaron Saunders, has two bills that would help towns protect themselves from large solar projects overwhelming the resources of small towns." Uh, that's H three two three oh and H three two two nine. Winita said, uh, "Because Borrego's initiation of this project began when Wendell was an environmental justice community. I don't see how the process cannot legally include Wendell residents." Laurel said, "Well done, Bill Stubblefield, so glad this is being reported." Um, "At today's TUE House Committee hearing on solar and solar sighting. One of the people who testifies, testified was Jessica Robinson, representing New Leaf of Lowell, Massachusetts. She claimed that the pace of solar deployment, deployment has slowed, so she is in favor of streamlining or expediting the solar sighting process." "She was one of a panel of three who represented businesses that complained that people who want more control of where solar is being sited in their towns. Are hampering the clean energy transition from fossil fuels. Actually, citizens are simply asking that solar be sited where it makes the most sense and where it is not destroying natural lands." Laurel also said, "I wish we could hear what people in the room are saying. I'm sorry, Laurel, we are gonna have, um, the minutes available." Laura also said, I wish we could hear what people in the room are saying. Sorry, Laurel, we are gonna have, um, the minutes available, um, for the meeting. Uh, the D E P in NEPA will be helpful. It would, this is Juanita, could come to with the wetlands and aquifer. That like the Arsenale Project, the Army Corps of Engineers would be the next step initiating NEPA unless Borrego has a workaround. Does anyone else have any questions or?
When do we start?
We're just all really grateful that you are here and that you came. We've been having this on our shoulders for, like you said, about two years now. Not knowing what would come, not knowing if the project would, you know, go to the. Uh, D P U or not, not knowing if the, our bylaw, we worked so hard on last year would go through. Um, not knowing if any future bylaw we write would. Have any effect on these projects whatsoever.
So both recap where exactly we are. We can explain that so we know what we expect next because we've been at the source.
We're not really sure. We're in the D P U process. They give an application in January twenty seven to twenty eight this year. I think I forget saying it. We will be notified, but I, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure. It was in my last vote to Eric Weiss and if we have a time to see what was this. He'll be willing to run out where we are and when it's.
The state sort of really. On what's gonna happen. My guess is they'll go the way to New York and Illinois, California have. Make sure that all the decisions happen in the east. The state government overrides any lawful input and just put an end to this.
Rick wanted to say something.
The thing I want to say is. I got with the D P U nineteen seventy two and I was told by an engineer from. Uh, it was A T T at that point. Said you call him every week. No matter what. You call so and so first, he'll say no, because I want polls. You call the D P U. I did it every week for four months. And if I said, give him his polls. So D P U does not like people calling consistently.
Squeaky wheels got to grease.
It is something that we really should think about in terms of constant contact. The D P U right now is a town. Doesn't have to be. What's in town just can be said.
Yeah, I mean, that's part of the reason we wanted to have this meeting. Volunteer board who is already stressed really bad and saying.
I regret that, that, that the, the, the voice of communities in small towns are seriously not provided up. We never always meant to tell people in the voice that. In small towns, it's kind of prompted that, and we're working on, so we should help that, but they're probably loving the future. So we as a committee talked about. Is okay, we encourage citizens to form citizens, well, citizens groups. That don't involve the community, so that it can be discussed and discussed and talk about things online about the limitations about the union laws. There's serious, you know, a thing like this, it's a hard defense. They could come back and harass us or give us some trouble because we may have had some violation of it. Not that that would make any difference in all the harm probably, but, but it's also historically true and this town has experienced it. That, that communities that act in unity and all have, have overwhelming opinions one way or another about a thing like this. And it can influence the outcome. As they don't want to be somewhere necessarily where everybody hates something. It's probably dangerous for them for some reasons.
You guys are amazing. The planning board really has to, just big, big thanks. Why don't we have a list around? Look how many people are here. Let's start. Let's start, you know, gotta paper.
Who is responsible at the D P U? There is a person who's.
There must be.
This particular.
Hey, we have the name of that person. I said, no problem calling here. We could probably find that. We don't really know.
Dance enough when you speak to.
So I have, uh, I know this is the boards committees, the select board, saying there's gonna be a. What we might learn more there. My question is. Is it for select? In conjunction with the planning board and other committees, our decision, what we made. For us to become a part of this and that in the D P U process, which is gonna require a set of legal counsel.
I don't know. I mean, to me, I've always kind of considered that we would need to, you know, that would be a town decision. I, I don't feel like I could make. Bad decision to use all that money and tell without.
So I. This has been a great meeting. But we're gonna come up to some decisions. And Georgie suggested some great actions that we can take. But those actions are not gonna be allowed. At the D P U hearing. And you're not gonna be part of that topic unless we have. Legal counsel. And expert witnesses to address this project. So I think we're gonna have to decide whether we're gonna be in or out on this project.
Bill, did you?
Sometime soon. Yeah. I think that's true. The, our decision points approaching rapidly. And just how rapidly we don't know. But the process does require public hearing. And they have to do it here. So people can certainly organize to be a powerful presence at that event. You can submit comments directly to the. You know, as part of, there would be added to the docket record for this. So there's opportunity there. And then the final thing is some kind of direct action. We can make our presence. Built when, as the project developed. But we're still in the early stages for that. I think the NEPA thing is our strongest weapon right now. And if we can get a thorough, get a real review. That would give us quite a bit more time to take more alternatives. And, um. Actions we might take. I think being a full intervenor in the project, D P U. I just, I find it hard to see how we afford that.
I, I mean, from my reading of the state zoning requirements and the, the greater sense of project. Permission, you know, certifications there, as I said earlier to someone's question, my understanding is there. If you are, if your criteria is correct, you can make the, the construction company. May for and engineering valuations. But we have to do more research to find out what, how, how we can meet that criteria. Because it's really, the cost of that is really somewhat beyond the ability of our budget to cover. I mean, just isn't. Now within the realm and that you can come up with. But the, but there may be that possibility. It's a thing that I have heard of people in the regional planning board. They may be able to consult with us about what criteria we need to get that from and at what stage. That's all right. If there's just a plan, a plan stage, um, not gonna get. Must be some point, it might be nasty, it might be at the point of NEPA review. But I think that's a thing we as a board can work into.
So can I ask? You have said a couple of you that it would be too expensive, but do you know exactly what sort of a number for that? You know, and if there's any chance at all that that might be a path you want to take, I think the planning board would be good to. Find a lawyer that would work and find out how much it would cost. Maybe Carver or somebody from one of these other towns to help with that.
Carver is unique in that, um, makes she hand is a lawyer and she's on the, a citizen of Carver and, you know, has been a huge player. Do you have any lawyers in town?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question to. I'll hope that for, and, and. I want that to, but from a few things that we've had in towns involved. Engineering and legal counsel that understand with just like ten acres or so.
Hey, Robert Kennedy's free.
Just what we've heard tonight. I mean, spreading the word about that, you know? Maybe this group could really plan something for old home day, you know, that people. And, and people down, like all the people that are affected by this biggest land area resource in. Southeastern, that, um, New England should be allies to. Um, well, I'm picking out a list of people that, um, maybe create some sort of mailing list to your more updates of things. Like what happened to me talking about things like that. Mostly what we're talking about these days. Do you need the? No, no.
Yeah, uh, I just wonder if anyone had reached out to Carver or Medway or Westfield. That we really ought to be working together.
Yeah.
Right.
No, we haven't yet.
Um, who would be the best person to reach out to? It would be Save the Pine Barrens or even like the. Carver Planning Board.
Well, I have some contact information I've taken. And I was gonna try and. Pull together some kind of a group meeting with the four towns to see if, uh, compare notes.
Yeah.
So I think that would be a really valuable thing for. That would be one I can learn about contact.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
That's great. Do you know, Bill, that they have, have any of those towns have made a team in legal or engineering compensation that's gonna be paid for by the five members?
Not that I'm aware of and. Save the Pine Barrens. Basically, town government is for the project and belongs.
Oh, so they're not gonna be looking at that.
Yeah. Medway, on the other hand, there is considerable. Opposition from town government and I think. One of their officials is an environmental lawyer herself. So I think that might be especially interesting. Westfield still early in the process, but. Uh, it would be really interesting to know how they're getting along with NEPA, so.
Yeah. Have they requested that people?
Um, I only know from the news reports that they were expected.
Um, I think with that, you know, for now, we'll conclude the meeting. I'm happy to have more of these in the days. And people. Just to be learning more. The people involved, but, um, do you have any passion about this? Is you can reach out to us and, um, we talk to each other.
You got the graphics up there. That's what I asked Jenny. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You don't have the rights to send it.
Yeah, it's part of problems the way that we see. He doesn't, he doesn't. Part of that's a thing you know are about that. Yeah, bylaws. So that's a question. I mean, that's part of the question, right? Our bylaws say that you need to do this. Can we use that to get?